Energy to whip it in.
Was that towards me?
Yeah.
Well, that could be a problem.
A hundred percent.
How was your trip?
To Jefferson City? That's good.
We went someplace else, Washington?
Yep, we did that, too.
Yep.
That was a good one.
Good.
But I've been to Mount Vernon. I've been all sorts of places. Mount Vernon is not that far away. Saw my mom, that's a big deal. She's probably watching right now. Are we live? Are we live, Chris?
We are live.
Okay, hello, Mom. Happy Mother's Day in advance. Yeah, let's do it.
Call this meeting to order. All those that care to, please stand for an opening prayer and the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Cameron.
Let's pray. Father, we just thank you for this day. We thank you for this city. Thank you for this country. Or I just pray, God, that you would guide and direct us in all that we do and all that we say tonight. Or thank you for your favor today with our measures and our funding that we're working on with our parks projects and just continue to guide and direct in everything that we do. We give you all the praise and glory in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Welcome to Republic. At this time, I'm going to open citizen participation. Anyone wishing to speak to anything not on the agenda, give us your three minutes and come on forward to council. We have... So we have no citizens signed up for citizens' participation. At this time, I'm going to close citizens' participation. Moving on to the consent agenda, I welcome the council to ask any questions or comments about items number one through four on the agenda. Seeing there are none, I now need a motion and a second for the approval of the consent agenda.
Motion.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second. All of those in favor?
Aye.
All of those opposed? Are there any abstentions? Motion carries eight zero. Seven? Sorry, seven zero. Moving on to board commission and committee schedules. Our next planning and zoning meeting will be March the 13th, 2023. Our next city council meeting will be March the 21st, 2023. Our first city council meeting in April will be April the 4th, 2023. And our next Board of Adjustment meeting will be April the 6th, 2023. I now need a motion and a second for the second reading of Bill 23-03 by title only, please.
Motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All of those in favor?
Aye.
All of those opposed? Are there any abstentions? Motion carries seven zero zero. Ms. Laura.
An ordinance of the city council amending the municipal code of the city of Republic Missouri Title IV Government Code, Chapter 405, Zoning Regulations, Article 405-1 in general and Article 405-3, Zoning Districts, Use and Regulations. Section 405.020, Definitions. Section 405.150, C1 Local Commercial District Regulations. Section 405.165, C3 General Commercial District. Section 405.170, M1 Light Industrial District Regulations. And Section 405.180, M2 Heavy Industrial District Regulations.
Do we have any updates from staff?
No updates.
No updates from staff? Does council have any questions or anything to add to the discussion? Seeing there are none, I now need a motion and a second for final passage of Bill 23-03, please.
Motion.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second. We are now going to take a roll call vote on our computers. Please click Refresh and vote on your computer. Motion carries seven zero zero. I now need a motion and a second for the second reading of Bill 23-04 by title only, please.
Motion. Second.
I've got a motion and a second. All of those in favor?
Aye.
All of those opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries seven zero zero. Ms. Laura.
An ordinance of the city council amending the municipal code of the city of Republic Missouri by amending Title VI Business and Occupation, Chapter 635 Medical Marijuana Facilities. Section 635.010, Definitions. 635.020, Compliance with Law. 635.030, Licensing. 635.040, Distance Requirements from Schools. 635.050, Distance Requirements from Churches. 635.060, Distance Requirements from Daycares. 635.070, Measurements. 635.080, Hours of Operation. And 635.090, Medical Marijuana Facility Requirements.
It's my understanding that we have some proposed changes to this bill. Mr. Tabor, would you please give council an overview of the proposed changes?
Chris Tabor, Principal Planner. As council is aware, there have been some changes to the Chapter 635 Code Provision Changes Ordinance previously presented at the last meeting. The changes have been provided to council prior to the meeting. These changes come from the state and offer further guidance regarding dispensary facility access. Staff is recommending these changes included in the final proposed amendment of Chapter 635.
Any questions from council on the proposed changes? Okay. I now need a motion and a second to amend Bill 23-04 as set forth in the city attorney's memorandum dated March the 7th, 2023.
Motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All of those in favor?
Aye.
All of those opposed? Are there any abstentions? Motion carries seven zero zero. Bill 23-04 is hereby amended. Are there any questions or discussion from council on Bill 23-04 as amended? Seeing there are none, I now need a motion and a second for final passage of Bill 23-04 as amended.
Motion.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second. We'll now take a roll call vote on our computers. Motion carries seven zero zero. Item number seven. I need a motion and a second for the second reading of Bill 23-05 by title only, please.
Motion.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second. All of those in favor?
Aye.
All of those opposed? Are there any abstentions? Motion carries seven zero zero. Ms. Laura.
An ordinance of the city council amending the municipal code of the city of Republic Missouri Title II Public Health, Safety and Welfare, Article 215-11, Offenses Concerning Drugs and Alcohol, Chapter 215, Offenses, by amending Section 215.1800, Possession of a Control... Possession or Control of a Controlled Substance, by repealing Section 215.1801, excuse me, Failure to Produce Medical Marijuana Identification, and Section 215.1804, Medical Marijuana Cultivation, and by adding new Section 215.1805, Marijuana Cultivation.
Do we have any updates from staff since the last meeting?
No updates.
Does council have any questions or discussion? Seeing there is none, I now need a motion and a second for final passage of Bill 23-05, please.
Motion.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second. We are now going to take a roll call vote on our computers. Motion carries seven zero zero. I now need a motion and a second for the second reading of Bill 23-06 by title only, please.
Motion.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All of those in favor?
Aye.
All of those opposed? Are there any abstentions? Motion carries seven zero zero. Ms. Laura.
An ordinance of the city council amending the municipal code of the city of Republic Missouri by amending Title V Building and Construction, Chapter 520, Fences and Walls, Section 520.020, Applicability, Section 520.030, Definitions, and Section 520.040, Fences and Walls.
Do we have any updates from staff since the last meeting?
No updates.
Does council have any questions? Seeing there are no questions, I now need a motion and a second for final passage of Bill 23-06, please.
Motion.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. We're now going to take a roll call vote on our computers.
Try again. There you go.
Okay. Motion carries seven zero zero. I need a motion and a second for the second reading of Bill 23-07 by title only, please.
Motion.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second. All of those in favor?
Aye.
All of those opposed? Are there any abstentions? Motion carries seven zero zero. Ms. Laura.
An ordinance of the city council amending the municipal code of the city of Republic Missouri by amending Title IV Government Code, Chapter 405, Zoning Regulations, Article 405-1 in general and Article 405-7, Additional District Provisions. Section 405.020, Definitions, and Section 405.640, Accessory Structures, and by adding new Section 405.643, DECS, and new Section 405.648, Accessory Dwelling Units.
Do we have any updates from staff since the last reading?
No updates.
Do we have any questions from council?
I'll just... I'll say something. A lot of these are just kind of cleanup. I think that was brought up the last meeting. And so I just want to thank staff for, you know, going through and kind of just doing some cleanup on some of our codes and stuff. So I just want to say I appreciate the staff's time on it.
Thank you, Mr. Self. Any other questions or comments from council? Seeing there is none, I now need a motion and a second for the final passage of Bill 23-07, please.
Motion.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second. We are now going to take a roll call vote on our computer.
Yeah, I hit it, but it didn't... Didn't work.
Sorry. I got lost there. Motion carries seven zero zero. I now need a motion and a second for the second reading of Bill 23-08 by title only, please.
Motion.
Second.
All of those in favor?
Aye.
All of those opposed? Are there any abstentions?
Abstain.
Motion carries six zero one. Ms. Laura.
An ordinance of the city council vacating approximately 10,550 square feet of right-of-way along North Turner Avenue.
Do we have any updates from staff since the last meeting?
No updates.
Do we have any questions or anything for the discussion from council? Seeing there is none, I now need a motion and a second for the final passage of Bill 23-08, please.
Motion.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second. We are now going to take a roll call vote on our computer. Motion carries six zero one. I need a motion and a second for the second reading of Bill 23-09 by title only, please.
Motion.
Second.
All of those in favor?
Aye.
All of those opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries seven zero zero. Ms. Laura.
An ordinance of the city council approving execution of a developer agreement with a Republic R3 school district for the construction of a queuing road for the Republic schools located at North Main Street and West State Highway 174.
Do we have any updates from staff since the last meeting?
No updates.
Do we have any questions or comments from council? Seeing there are none, I now need a motion and a second for the final passage of Bill 23-09, please.
Motion.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second. We are now going to take a roll call vote on the computer.
Mine got stuck.
Try... Will it hit Refresh? Will it let you?
Yes.
Good job.
Motion carries seven zero zero. I now need a motion and a second for the second reading of Bill 23-10 by title only, please.
Motion.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All of those in favor?
Aye.
All of those opposed? Are there any abstentions? Motion carries seven zero zero. Ms. Laura.
An ordinance of the city council authorizing the issuance, sale, and delivery of special obligation bonds, Series 2023 of the city of Republic Missouri, approving certain documents, and authorizing certain other actions in connection therewith.
Any... Do we have any updates? Ah, sorry. Read the line. It's my understanding that we have some proposed changes to this bill. Mr. Keeling, would you please give us an overview of the proposed changes, please?
Certainly so. Thank you, Jared Keeling, Parks and Recreation Director. I'm going to give a kind of a broad overview, then I'm going to turn it over to Martin Gaffory with Steeple, and then at the end, we do have some proposed amendments. So as you recall at last meeting, this... The sale of these bonds will generate the proceeds, the funds necessary to fund two of our capital improvement projects within our park system, the expansion of the Aquatic Center, and also the event space at JR Mark. They'll go out in 2024 for another debt issuance to fund the regional park with the sports complex. But so excited to be here today. We went out to market today, earlier today, for the sale of these bonds. And with that said, I'm going to... Martin Gaffory is... Works with Steeple. Martin's been with us throughout this process, and he can provide an overview of how the sales...
Good evening, everybody. Thanks, Jared. Appreciate that. I'll give you a brief overview of what took place today, which overall was a great outcome, and I think everybody should be pleased with exactly where we ended up. This has been a months-long process that's led us to this point, and Jared and Jennifer and the team all around has just done a fantastic job and really been very thorough in their responses and everything. It's just been a great... A great process. So today, we sold about just under 10 million of bonds, and actually, we received a significant amount of orders on those bonds, just about $54 million of orders. So what that means is when we get significantly more orders than bonds available, just like supply and demand, we're able to actually lower the interest rates from where we went out to market. So the original all-in interest rate, which is what I would call the equivalent of the APR, or, you know, if you're doing a home loan or a car loan, takes into account all the fees, all of the interest rates. It was about 4.56% earlier this morning. Because we had such a great showing with this bond sale, we were able to lower it on average about six basis points, so it came down to a 4.50 and change. So it was a very good outcome. The strong bond market today is a good... It was a good day. I mean, I wish we could say we timed it, but we picked today for the council meeting to get this approved. And there were a number of different orders that came in from a bunch of different types of investors. Retail actually stepped in to the tune of just about 10%, so $1 million of these bonds were sold to retail individuals or individual investors. So that's something that can be touted as well. That's... That's a great outcome, to be able to get these bonds in individual investors' hands so they could kind of benefit from this double tax exemption as well for these municipal bonds. And we were able to get the bonds affirmed as far as the underlying rating for the city. So if you were to sell general obligation bonds, your rating would be AA minus. These bonds, though, are one level below because they are not as secure. It's not the same security structure. These are special obligation bonds, so they're one level below that rating at A+. So it's a very strong rating. I think in the near future, maybe in the next... Maybe the next bond issuance, or maybe in the next couple of years, that rating may change in an upward trajectory. We'll just let you guys continue doing the great things that you do, and I think that we'll see some positive changes in that rating as well in the years to come. Overall, you received a total deposit on the project fund of $9.85 million. So those funds will be available and deposited into your accounts in March 23rd. So just about two weeks from today, those funds will be ready, and the transaction will essentially be closed at that point. But as of today, we did actually not sell all of one maturity. So if any of you do want to buy some bonds, I think there is one maturity left in 2028, and those are still there in our inventory. But we end up securing and locking those rates, though, still, even though we haven't sold those bonds. So we maintain that rate, and it's on us to sell those bonds, and we take that risk going forward. So if you have any money laying around, you know, it might be a good investment. But beyond that, I did include... I'm not sure if you all received this. Did you guys all receive this as well? It's a little snapshot of exactly what took place. I didn't want to read line by line. I think you guys can do that on your own. But just at the bottom of this page, too, it does show you the trajectory of interest rates over the past number of years, which we know, you know, kind of during COVID, interest rates were as close to zero as they've ever been. And in recent months, interest rates have kind of spiked up a little bit. So even though interest rates have kind of gone up over the last few months, overall, this is still a very good outcome for the city, and you guys should all be proud of the work that was done to get us here, and all your employees, and everything that's been going on, on your behalf for the city as well. So I'm happy to answer questions or anything along those lines that you may have.
Any questions from council?
Mr. Gerke.
I'm sure David's probably already asked you this, but anything to... Us to focus on or improve future bond issues for better rating?
Yeah. Really, it's mostly things that are not in your control that are being kind of cited. And it's like income levels and just the local economy is, as far as that goes. You're seeing significant assessed value growth. You're seeing significant development in different entities coming to the area. So all of those boxes are checked. Your pension was cited years ago, but that pension funding level has gone up to a point to where I don't even believe it was mentioned in the rating report this time around. So I think from that perspective, it's really things that aren't in your control that they're kind of calling out at this point. There are a lot of things that are just momentum-wise are moving in your direction, and I really do think that in the next... In the next couple of years, perhaps, we may see some upward momentum and change in this... In this rating.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council? Mr. Cameron, do you have anything to add?
No, I just appreciate the work that Steeple always does for us. Many do not recall this, but Martin and I was reflecting upon this today, that back in the 16 and 17, the city's net cash position was in a very difficult spot, and reached out to Martin with Steeple. It's shortly after my tenure began, and he helped us restructure our desk to free up the cash that kept us, the city, in a way that was able to get us out of a very stressful situation. So I've always enjoyed our relationship. It's always transparent. It's always very straightforward, and we get stuff done very quickly. But I think that he gives us a straightforward answer every time, and I appreciate the work that you've done to help us and always answer our calls and take our criticisms when we give them, too. Because I think it was last year, you had to listen to us complain about the S&amp;P rating once you had no control over. And I'll still say I'm disappointed with last year's S&amp;P rating.
Yeah, me too.
But I think that... I think that... I appreciate the feedback for Councilmember Gerke. I think that what we can do, though, is something that, as a community, that we continue to focus on. He said the job market and the base level of income in our region, I think that's something that we would all agree, that the median income household pay in our region needs to increase. And I think that's something between Andrew and myself, the staff, the mayor talked about a lot about how do we leverage the assets in Republic to continue to lure and attract development and industry into our community with the resources we have. But this council should take tremendous credit for a lot of the work you've allowed us to do to create those economic development opportunities. So the reason our rating is continuing to go up is we're creating those opportunities, but it's going to continue to take work. So I just... I thank you for that feedback because it's something that I think gets lost, that our growth as a community and the way we run it and operate it does matter in the bond market, and it matters by how we continue to approach that. So I think it's very important that we stay on target with that. So thank you.
Thanks. Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Also echo the... Echo the appreciation for Martin and his team, and also Mark from Gilmore and Bell. He's not here, and I couldn't be with us, but he has helped us tremendously throughout this process as well. So we do have a number of amendments, Mr. Franklin, so I'll let you proceed with those. Thank you. Just for clarity, the reason behind the amendments is we had to leave a lot of fill-in-the-blanks as a result of the bond sale today, so this is the reason behind the amendment.
Just to let council know, one of the papers here before you are the proposed changes for this ordinance. Are there any questions from council on the proposed changes to the ordinance? I now need a motion and a second to amend Bill 23-10 by incorporating the revision shown in the red-line version of Bill 23-10 provided to council.
Motion.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second. All of those in favor?
Aye.
All of those opposed? Are there any abstentions? Motion carries seven zero zero. Bill 23-10 is hereby amended. Does council have any questions or discussion on Bill 23-10 as amended? Seeing there are none, I now need a motion and a second for the final passage of Bill 23-10 as amended, please.
Motion.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second. We are now going to take a roll call vote on the computer. Motion passes seven zero zero. Moving on to new business and first reading of ordinances, I need a motion and a second for the first reading of Bill 23-11 by title only, please.
Motion.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second. All of those in favor?
Aye.
All of those opposed? Are there any abstentions? Motion carries seven zero zero. Ms. Laura.
An ordinance of the city council amending the municipal code of the city of Republic Missouri by amending Title II Public Health, Safety and Welfare, Chapter 212, Special Events. Section 212.001, Permit Required. 212.003, Definitions. 212.005, Submission of Special Events Application. 212.007, Plan Review Meeting Notification to Applicant. And 212.009, Terms and Conditions.
Mr. Tabor is here to give us an overview.
Good evening again. Briefly, this ordinance change concerns special events, which are public or private events on public or private property that are expected to have an impact on city service provision. The proposed amendment to Chapter 212 would transition the responsibility of the permitting of these special events to the Builds Department. If the amendment is approved, the Builds Department will facilitate the processing of these permit applications and coordinate reviews between necessary departments. Staff recommends the approval of this code amendment.
Do we have any questions from council?
Where were they before? Like, who was getting them before?
So traditionally, these have moved throughout different departments of... Different departments of the city, but previously, they were with police, or currently, actually.
Yeah, okay. You guys good with getting rid of them?
Any other questions from council? Seeing there are none, do we have any citizens signed? We have no citizens signed up to speak on this ordinance. So remember, this is a first read, so if you have any questions, please get with staff before the next meeting. Moving on to other business and resolutions. 23-R-14, A Resolution of the City Council Authorizing the Final Expenditure of an Emergency Repair of Well Number Six. repair of well number six. I need a motion and a second to take up Resolution 23-R-14, please.
Motion.
Second.
Ms. Haynes is here to give us an overview.
Good evening, Karen Haynes, builds administrator. The builds department is requesting final authorization for the expenditures for an emergency repair of well number six. This is the well and tower located near what will be the new sports complex near James River Expressway. The repair included a new well, pump, check valves, and also fittings. So on Sunday, February 5th, well number six tripped, which is an electrical flow shut-off. The following day, we called out an electrician who verified the pump needed to be pulled and tested. We did complete that the following week and contacted a well contractor who came out and pulled the pump. We did have to ultimately repair and replace multiple parts. The emergency purchase was authorized under our emergency purchase procedures and our financial policy, and it was approved by the city administrator on February 15th with a not to exceed provision of $100,000. The well contractor, all said and done, was right at $62,745 for equipment installation, which was completed a couple of weeks ago. I do want to note that there was no interruption in service throughout this, like three-week-long process, and we are recommending approval.
Excellent. Do we have any questions or comments from council?
This could be a weird question, is there a warranty when you get new parts and things for wells?
Yes, I believe the warranty on the new motor itself and pump will be five years, that's pretty standard. This particular, the pump was in the ground for about 17 years. We typically see a life expectancy between like 15 and 20, so it was kind of right there where we expected it to be.
Of two. Number one, is that typical, wait for it to die and then do something about it, there's no like routine?
There's not really a procedure that is economical to pull and replace an actual pump or motor for a well. You kind of just have to be at the mercy of knowing when those potential impacts will happen and trying to plan financially for it. You wouldn't necessarily replace those until they actually go out.
So, I'm not going to get in the weeds about planning this emergency thing. Is that how we plan though, is to dip into the city administrator's emergency fund? Is that kind of?
No, we actually have a reserve fund in the water department, the same as we do in like the sewer department, for emergency repairs.
Why this time did we have to go this direction?
The expenditure did come out of the, the water fund. The procedure for moving forward with the repair immediately was just under the procedures and the financial policy because of the, the total financial impact being over $50,000.
So regardless of if we vote yes or no, whoever did the work's going to get paid?
Yes, the work is already done. This is really just a formal procedure to notify you all that we did go through the correct procedure, and the final expenditure is right at that $62,000 mark.
Any other questions or comments from council?
Seeing there are none, and as this is a resolution, I will call this to a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
All of those opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries 700. 23-R-15, a resolution of the city council authorizing the builds department to purchase a crack sealing machine for roadway repair. I need a motion and a second to take up Resolution 23-R-15, please.
Motion.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. We've got Mr. Brickner here this evening to give us an overview.
Good evening, Garrett Brickner, Assistant Builds Administrator. So what we'd like to do is go ahead and purchase the crack sealer as it's listed here. The specifications and stuff are in the packet as well. What we're doing is utilizing Sourcewell, which is a division of the state of Minnesota's government. So basically, to follow proper bidding and proposal procedures, there are certain rules that municipalities and governments have to follow. So what they have done at Sourcewell is basically gone through that process and allowed, and opened it up for anybody else to kind of piggyback off their contracts. So this is a little bit new process for me, so I did a lecture, extra digging, checked with the auditors, made sure everything was on the up and up for this process, they said it's all good. So the retail price for this crack sealing machine would be $69,550, utilizing the Sourcewell contract, brought it down to $61,752. As kind of a sanity check, also went out and got bids from a similar product, and that came in at $73, $73,492. So what this will allow us to do is extend the life period of certain roadways, and it's a best management practice for, like if you're going to do an overlay, you should seal the cracks first, so that there's not water that still gets in there, or the cracks don't permeate through the new layer. So as far as savings to the city, that's kind of hard to quantify. I would think of it more of, you're extending the life of the roads that you've done, so instead of having to do them every 20 years, maybe you can go every 25 years. So over the long period of like 100 years, you're only redoing the roads four times instead of five times, that's how it saves us money. This particular machine comes with a two-year bumper-to-bumper warranty, so if anything goes wrong, we call the manufacturer, they fix it. It's expected to last 15, 20 years, there are some of them that are still in the streets 20, 25 years. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Have any questions from council?
Is this the first one that we've purchased before?
This is the first one of this size. We've done some small crack sealing, like if you've ever done a driveway, you can do it that way, it's not the best way to do roads.
Who, who do we hire out to do this?
Typically, yeah, so typically, it would just be part of the contract for, like if we were doing overlays, we would have them do this before they did the overlays. I'm not, I don't think we've done it since I've been here, actually, crack sealing, so.
That's awesome.
I've got a question. So is this going to require any additional training from staff as far as using that? You know, I've said, you said we've used it before, is this, I mean, I'm sure it's fairly simple to use, but safety concerns and whatnot, are we going to have additional training before having to use this, or are we kind of ready to go?
Street staff is pretty well educated on how to be safe with this stuff, but yeah, I mean, obviously read how to use the stuff and.
General safety?
Yeah, yep.
Operator's manual.
Operator.
So if this, we've rented, so we've used it renting before, I think I remember that discussion before with about crack sealing. So if this does pass tonight and it goes through council, what's our window looking at when we get this in our hands?
Hopefully, three to four weeks.
Three to four weeks?
Yep.
So what's an average cost, like if you were going to run that machine for a day to run, seal cracks and whatnot, how much money of product would that take to a day's worth of work? I know it's hard to say because you don't exactly know what you're doing, but on average, how much material cost goes into using this machine?
That's a great question. I don't have an answer for you tonight, I can get you that information though.
Is that something that we bid on, like with our aggregate and everything else?
It would probably just be a material purchase, I can't, I don't want to give it, if it got into that quantity, we absolutely would bid it out and follow the purchasing procedure.
That was more of a curiosity question, this is actually one of my favorite things for this evening. Do we have any other questions from council?
Seeing there are none, and as this is a resolution, I will call this to a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
All of those opposed? Are there any abstentions? Resolution carries 700. 23-R-16, a resolution of the city council authorizing the builds department to purchase two pumps to replace pumps number two and number three for Schuler Creek Lift Station. I need a motion and a second to take up Resolution 23-R-16, please.
Motion.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, and we've got Mr. Brickner here to give us an overview.
So as we brought to you a couple times now, Schuler Creek had a couple of pumps go out in January. Originally, the city was looking to rebuild the five-year-old pumps that went out, the quote for that came back at $84,038 for each of them. At that time, JCI Industries, who we, they're the sole source provider for flight pumps in this area, and we had previously approved the purchase of a fifth pump, they came to us and said, hey, if you'd like, we'll look at doing some sort of discount rate since you're, if you would be willing to buy three of them. So we had them look at that, the total price for those was like, was right around $118, instead of the $138 previously. So it would actually reduce the price of the fifth pump that came before you last time at council. So total price comparison was going to be $352,000 for the three new pumps, or $306,296 for the one new pump and two rebuilds. So with the buying the new pumps, it's an upgraded system, we talked about the closed cooling system that the new pumps have, that's what these pumps would be. They also come with a extended warranty versus rebuild pumps, rebuilds come with a one-year warranty where the new pumps come with a five-year, it's a prorated warranty, so it slowly declines over time until you get to five years, then there's nothing. So staff is recommending approval of purchasing three new pumps rather than rebuilding two of the broken ones.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any questions or discussion from council? Mr. Gerke?
Is there a market for these broken ones that we then have that we're replacing? I mean, it seems like a pretty expensive item to not be able to resell to somebody, or is that part of the purchasing process they take?
Sure. We would have to rebuild the pump, so we'd have to pay the $84,000.
Regardless?
Yeah, and then potentially we could resell it. It's not something that we've done that way.
So what do we do with them?
I'd imagine JCI will keep them, and then they'll, they may rebuild them or just use them for parts off them.
Gotcha.
Good question, no core charge.
Any other questions, Mr. Gerke?
What's the usual useful life, it's like both of those are right at five years?
It's, it's right at five years. Typically, a new pump will go about five years and then need to be rebuilt. If you rebuild them continually throughout their lifespan, they can last up to 25 years. So with this, with the purchase of a fifth pump and these two new pumps, we are going to start rotating them in, and then as we approach those five-year, five years of use on each pump, we're going to start rotating them out and just going to have them rebuilt. We did that last fall with a pump that was five years old. That only cost us about $38,000 to have that one rebuilt. We just were a little behind, and then two more went out. So we're kind of resetting that stage with hopefully the purchase of these pumps, and then going forward, starting in 2026, we'll just start rebuilding one every year to hopefully keep, keep all of them functioning.
Thank you. Any other questions from council?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Cameron.
Just a comment, so for reference, this lift station, how many gallons goes through it a day? Ballpark.
Probably 700,000.
And how many gallons goes through the wastewater plant a day?
About 1.4 million.
So half of the volume of the city goes, so when we're talking about a pump station, I just want to give you reference, these pumps are about half, probably two-thirds of the way to the ceiling. So if you were to set that pump in this room, that's how big these things are. So back to what we're talking about the wastewater, it was kind of a setup question. It's just to put perspective of this pump station is where the wastewater plant was supposed to be in 2000, or 1999. So we're pumping half of the city's volume through this station, and so when you're moving that much wastewater to a plant, it's only going to last five years, and so that's why it's, I think, that's why it's so expensive. So I commend you for the replacement program, I think Councilmember Gerlick was getting to, is do we have a plan that we're replacing? I love to see that we have a redundancy mindset in place, that we're going to redo this every year versus buying these things, because when they built the lift station, they had nothing, and so when one of those big old things goes out and there's a 54-week lead time to get one, then the city's at issue a DNR again that we're overflowing into a creek. So what happens if the pump goes out? Flows into the ditch, right?
Yep.
So I commend you, it's kind of hard to explain all that, but I think you've done a great job to forward things to get that done, but you inherited that problem, that situation, I think you've done a great job of leading it, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cameron. Any other questions from council?
Seeing there are none, and as this is a resolution, I will call this to a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
All of those opposed? Are there any abstentions? Resolution carries 700. 23-R-17, a resolution of the city council approving REVEL Advertising as an on-call consultant for marketing services. I need a motion and a second to take up Resolution 23-R-17, please.
Motion. Second.
I've got a motion and a second, and Mr. Nelson is here to give us an overview.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Andrew Nelson, Deputy City Administrator. The city sent out a request for qualifications for a consultant to do marketing services. I would define that as communication pieces, branding, and when I say branding, I mean help with our logos, colors, things of that nature, any publications that we might do. The goal here was in the absence of a PIO to have a service available to us that could fill that void if we needed it. So this is not approving any actual task, it's merely approving this firm as qualified. This was the only submittal that we had, so any tasks that we would set them out on would be subject to the purchasing policy and then further council approval.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson. Do we have any questions or discussion from council? Mr. Gerke?
You referenced the PIO, are we, I guess we're still actively looking for someone in that, and then also, if that's appointed, they would have, I guess, the option to change or alter this?
Yeah, yeah, that's correct. We, the, the job is posted, this would be a resource to the PIO for any of those tasks that we might need. You know, it comes to mind that we're doing a lot of projects in this community, and I think communicating those projects in a way that everybody can understand and visualize is going to be important, and I think that this could be a helpful tool in that endeavor.
Any other questions from council?
Seeing there are none, and as this is a resolution, I will call this to a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
All of those opposed? Are there any abstentions? Resolution carries 700. 23-R-18, a resolution of the city council appointing authorized signers for the general operating account and bond proceeds account with Arvest Bank. I need a motion and a second to take up Resolution 23-R-18, please.
Motion. Second.
Got a motion and a second, we've got Mr. Nelson here again to give us an overview.
Thank you. If the council recall, we, we've probably seen this resolution at least three times in the past six months. In the absence of a finance director, Jared and I kind of stepped in and divvied up duties, and I'm happy to report that we have actually hired a finance director, and a good one at that. Mr. Bob Ford is here tonight.
Welcome, Bob.
We're excited to have him, I think everybody's got a chance to express how excited we are to have him, probably two weeks into the job, but we're going to go ahead and move that over to Bob's control, and that resolution gives that authority.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson. Any questions or comments from council?
Seeing there is none, as this is a resolution, I will call this to a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
All of those opposed? Are there any abstentions? Resolution carries 700. 23-R-19, a resolution of the city council authorizing execution of agreement with the University of Missouri Extension for assistance with increasing community engagement in Republic. I need a motion and a second to take up Resolution 23-R-19, please.
Motion. Second.
I have a motion and a second, and we have Mr. Nelson here to give us an overview this evening.
Thank you. In the spirit of the discussion about communication and engagement with the community, we know through several work sessions with the council that engagement and communication was of the top priorities, and even with our own staff when we talked about internal communication. So we've got a focus on communication, you've seen that in a couple of items tonight. We reached out, I don't know if we reached out, or maybe Dave, Mr. Burton reached, mutual We know that he has an ability to engage the community via a neighborhood program. We believe that a lot of those target, you know, when we were sitting in the work session the other day, there's a list of things that we were talking about, we got to get out to the community, and you know, I kind of wrote Mr. Burton's name down beside these things. I think this program and his work in general is an avenue for the city to get out amongst the community. the community. That's one piece of it. The neighboring piece of it, to me, goes back to that discussion about growth. So one of the concerns expressed to the council and to the staff about our growth is that we may lose the small-town feel as we continue to grow. And I think this program addresses some of those concerns, or at least provides an avenue for people to help maintain that, that small-town identity. But we've got Mr. Burton here tonight. I'm going to ask him to come up and give a little bit of an overview of that program.
Thank you. Thanks for the privilege of being here tonight, and I've sat at your desk a packet of information. You may want to keep that at your nightstand or something and peruse that several evenings. I tried to include research-based information I thought was relevant to maybe understanding this larger subject in terms of neighboring, and that includes a case study of neighboring in Republic. That includes some survey data that was gathered in 2019, and then again in this past year, 2022. It also includes the state of neighboring study that we did that finished in December. That is a scientifically valid study with a plus or minus of 3% validity. I think you'll find some of that information interesting. Let me give a side note here. I think one of the most interesting questions in there is when we asked participants what traits they want to see in a good neighbor. We gave them 30 traits to pick from, and the top two traits of what people want to see in a good neighbor is someone who's quiet and someone who leaves me alone. That is not what an engaged neighbor is, and that's kind of the message we're trying to carry. But that's also the cultural narrative that we're fighting against, in that many people see it that way, quiet and leaves me alone. But that does not make for an engaged citizen. So you also have a couple of newsletters in there. Those are newsletters that I've been doing and that the Green County Extension Council has been funding for what we've tried to create, and what we've been calling the Owen Park Neighborhood Association. And it's centered around Owen Park. I know Mr. Franklin walks over there sometimes. This is in keeping with something known as asset-based community development, which is a positive approach toward community development, in that we look at what the assets are, we look at what the talents are in an area, and we build on those assets and talents instead of focusing on the problems. Oftentimes, you end up resolving problems, but when you focus on problems, people won't come back to meetings. I've been to, I've been to so many homeowners association meetings, I can write the agenda for them before I even show up. They all talk about the same thing. Basketball goal in the wrong place, you know, cars parked on the street. It's always a negative type of approach. When you take this positive type of approach and you look for people's talents, and you give them opportunities to use those talents, that's a completely different type of approach. And it is a more positive way of getting things done. It is a way to get people more engaged as well. So you'll see some of that information there, and then just kind of an overview proposal with some of the content that I thought was maybe relevant here. We're really talking about a resident-led, but city-supported type of initiative. The goal being creating neighborhoods that are clean, safe, and friendly. And I think this is something to note, because there was some discussion earlier about economic impact. There's quite a bit of research about the impact of social capital. Robert Putman coined that term when he wrote Bowling Alone. And there's a lot of research that would suggest that social capital is actually more impactful on your economy than some of the things we typically think of, like bringing in jobs. So social capital is a big component of that. And in our culture, we currently see a really high level of loneliness, a high level of disconnection and isolation, and that's the opposite of social capital. So you have some people with real strengths and gifts that are not engaging in their community, and we miss out on that. We miss out on that social capital. That, that does impact our economy. There's some numbers that, some research that gives significant numbers to that, of what that looks like. That can be 30, 40% of your economy that you're losing by people not being socially connected and engaged. So that's part of this as well. There are some models around the country for cities that have developed sort of neighborhood councils, neighborhood associations to get people involved. I hope that's the direction this goes. Some of it depends on who comes to the table, what organizations want to get involved. There's a little bit of a question with some of that, I think. But I think Republic can be a real leader in this area and a leader with this plan. So I'm happy to field questions.
Council, have any questions for Mr. Burton?
No, but thank you. This is awesome. I was just listening to a podcast, how this is the loneliest generation, and it's just sad, so we need people in connection. So thank you for spearheading this.
Well, let me ask myself a question, because I thought this might come up. So I'll, I'll...
Can I ask mine before?
Oh, sure. You ask me, sure.
What does success look like?
Yeah, that's good.
Yeah, that's a great question. Well, I think it's, it's when you're, you have, you sort of have the micro and the macro levels, right?
Yeah, more macro, yeah, overall for the city.
How do we measure an increased level of engagement?
Yeah, sure.
Certainly, in the first year, I think we're going to have to come to some conclusions as to what that looks like, right? Does it mean more people showing up at public meetings? Does it mean doing public meetings in a different way? I mean, those are questions on the table. I think you have to kind of decide what that criteria is. I partnered with an organization in Springfield two years ago where we create a neighborhood initiative with them. My idea of what success looked like was different than theirs. I think their, their expectation was lower than what mine was, and they, and they were happy with the outcomes. I thought we could have done more. But if we have, ultimately, if we have some neighborhood associations that form and become active, I would love to see some of those associations adopt a sort of a neighborhood watch aspect to it that I know we've tried to initiate in the past. I think we need to put some numbers to that, and I think that's conversations we need to have. So I'm not, it doesn't really answer the question, I guess, but I think that's up to staff and some of our discussions.
I mean, it's nice to know that, like, there's an eye on success, that it's not just, we're going to start this thing and see where it goes, right? That the idea would be to put down what success looks like and then shoot for it.
There, there are lots of examples of success. And so I do a program once a month called Neighboring 101, and in January, we had a panel of different cities that have neighboring initiatives like this. So represented from those cities to talk about what they're doing, what is unique about their program. And one of the panels was from Peoria, Arizona, and they've had a neighboring initiative for several years, but one of the things they kicked off this year was doing public meetings in the neighborhoods. Instead of at a city hall or someplace, they would do flyers, mailers, even for road construction, and then do these pop-up meetings, is what they called them, a pop-up tent. And, and they were crowing about how much better their attendance had been, they'd had more questions, more engagement, more involvement. Maybe that's something we want to do in Republic. Maybe there's other things we should target first. So I think there's a lot of opportunities here. The question I was going to ask myself, I guess, was about the, the fee that's involved in this, but I want you to realize that the university funds a lot of our positions on grant funding. We're required to seek some of those types of grant dollars at times, but, but there's a lot of other inputs into this already. The Green County Extension Council puts about $6,000 into the neighboring program a year. I have a sponsor that contributes $900 a month to underwrite any neighboring initiatives or neighboring work that takes place. So there's several people at the table investing, and then MU, of course, invest significantly in it as well.
Any other questions from council?
Mr. Mayor. So Councilman McGurlick, I think you have a great question. So I want to go back to the discussion we had when we first met.
Yeah.
Was you, you had advised, which really prompted us to actually pursue this. So I would define success for all of us as this. We run four ballot measures in this community. We've asked the people, the community to show up. Rarely, you'll see those that have been in this chamber, it's hard to have that engagement, to have those discussions, but you'll see it on social media and you more, more than you ever will in this arena. But what you did in your neighboring programs that you shared with us, you started off with 16 neighbors getting together. And what lit our eyes up is one time when you said you had somewhere around 98, and you were having lawn chairs sitting in, in a neighborhood, and we were thinking, what would it be like if we could insert a city presence and get feedback and say, hey, in a non, because this, this environment to some would be intimidating. We're sitting up here looking down, down, I mean, it's like, but being in a neighborhood and someone saying, I'm very frustrated about my sewer bill, where we would have on-the-ground ability to connect and explain, that was, to me, the successful part, that we would make ourselves available outside of this dice area, that we could go into the community and to actually be a neighbor and be a part of the community versus sitting up here in a position of legislative authority, I guess you could say, so that we could hear and get that feedback. Because sometimes it's hard, you know, because for us, no disrespect, the social media, legislating through that is not favorable, because I want to look somebody in the face. So I would define success as that we're, in the first year, we're in those neighborhood meetings in a non-threatening way, just to glean feedback, and what are we hearing that we could bring back to a collective body? Say, surveys are great that would get mailed in, but talking to someone at a, at a grassroots level in their yard, in their space, and hearing like, I'm frustrated with traffic, I want to see more work on this. Or we would take our updates to the community. That's how I would define success, is that we expand our reach to, say, 10 families at a time, even if it's at a barbecue or whatever you guys are doing, these neighborhood. I think it's fantastic that we would love to have the opportunity to talk to one another and hear that, because a lot of times, in my seven years here, you've just not experienced it here until someone's mad or upset. And I'd prefer that if, how I define success is we at least get out there. We may have debate in the, in the, in the neighborhood, we may all agree as to what that looks like, but at least we're together, and they feel like they're being heard from their community, and we're reaching out versus waiting for them to come to us. That's how I would define success. And four hours a week, I think, is what we're talking about, not to exceed $15,000. That was impressive to me, to this council, which is why we would even consider this, like, man, you've got 92 people in a neighborhood to get together. I mean, you should get an award, which you did.
Yeah.
So I just, I love your heart and your vision.
Well, thank you.
You know, your passion to follow what the word says, and so I admire that, so...
Well, let's be honest, since this is on YouTube, you're going to get more than four hours a week out of me.
Well, your attorney's probably going to tell you, contracts are obligated to four.
Yeah, but I live out here in Republic, and this is my passion. And, and what this does by having this sort of agreement is it, it prevents the university from attaching me to some other type of grant that maybe I might not feel so passionate about, and lead me to somewhere else around the state. And so I'm excited to be a part of that and be here and get those neighborhood associations organized and...
Love it.
Doing some good work.
Thank you, Mr. Burton.
Thank you.
Mr. Nelson, do we have any questions or comments from council?
I've been involved in a couple of the events at Owen Park, and did have great turnouts, and I think any opportunity we have to push information out and take information back to the public would benefit with everything that's going on, so it's a good opportunity.
Thank you. Anyone else from council?
Mr. Nelson, actually, I've got something. I called Mr. Nelson this morning, and I've got a small issue with this, and it has nothing to do with the Good Neighbor Program, Mr. Burton, or anything else. It's just, you know, my view on the purpose of government and what government should be doing. And when my view, and when I'm sitting up here, I see the purpose of government being roads, police, fire, things that are essential to government function. I struggle a little bit when we step into the social aspect of it. And we had a great conversation, and Mr. Cameron has even said a few things about the communication aspect of it, but we're still stepping into that social aspect of it. And so I'm just struggling with the, the social aspect of this and the cost of it and as being a priority for our funding. Mr. Cameron had mentioned not to exceed $15,000. Is that what we're proposing?
Yes, so, yeah, I would, I would say that's, engaging in the social aspect's tough, because where we don't see that as a government function, I would argue that we have a position in a PIO that that is the primary function, is to socially engage. So in the absence of that, I believe that this is, again, an avenue that fills a void that we have at the moment, but it is a not to exceed of 15,000, and that's for an agreement with MU, as Mr. Burton indicated. That allows us to professionally engage him. He does a lot of this volunteer work on his own time already, so this is a more involved. I think the way the staff had envisioned this program going forward was probably to involve a couple of members of the council in this endeavor and create sort of a committee, so to speak, on how to actually endeavor this process.
So would that be for 15,000 for a year?
Yes.
And that would come from the general fund?
Yes, we are under the, I believe it's Communications Fund, General Fund, so that's where we would budget for publications, anything that, like our annual report that we do, and I believe the PIO also.
Sure. And I don't mean, the Great, Good Neighbor Program, you know, I love everything Mr. Burton does. I get to see him in the park. I love him as my neighbor. It's just I have an issue with that, crossing that social boundary. I feel it's a little bit like a round pole, round peg in a square hole, if that makes sense. Yeah, it'll fit, but as far as my thought on, you know, the purpose of government, roads, fire, all the things essential, I really struggle with that, even with the communications aspect of it. I feel the communications aspect of it is a small portion of that. I know in general, all of it, roundabout, right now, citizens are contacting me about a lot of different things. Social programs is not necessarily one of them. The general fund, you know, for several years, we've been sitting here, talking about, we have funds in the general fund, we've raised taxes in the general fund, and now we've, we're implementing social programs. And that's not to say anything against anybody, it's just when I take this to the public and I have to explain it, all of a sudden, I've got to explain how we can pay for things like this out of the general fund when we didn't have enough money for fire and police. And I'm not trying to complicate the waters, this is just an issue I'm having with getting on board.
I think that's valid discussion. I think, you know, the, the way we viewed this program or this engagement with Mr. Burton is, we had budgeted for a PIO for a couple of years now. We have actually saved funds over a period of years that are now in our reserve. So while it comes out of an operating line in the general fund, it's not a, it's not an annual allocation that, that we're appropriating this year or taking away from something else. It's an amount of money that was saved in, in previous budgetings.
So could this money be used in some of our unfunded projects right now? That, I know we just got an email a couple of weeks ago that's this long with unfunded projects, and so that's kind of another struggle.
That's my favorite list. I don't know of any city around, any government entity that doesn't have an unfunded needs list. So to your point, yes, these funds could absolutely be taken and used for any of those. It's a general fund money that's allowable for any...
For streets or for... And that's, that's just kind of where I'm going back to. We've just had such a struggle, and especially the last year, with streets, road projects, microsealing, how much street we're going to get. $15,000, I just see that, the microsealing, you know, I've still got those numbers in my head. I know that doesn't give you a lot of new road, but repairs, stuff to put in that nice sealer that hopefully I get to see pretty soon in action, but that's all I had. I don't want to keep going on. It's just that I'm having a hard time getting behind this, just because when I look at government as a function, and as an essential function, I'm eyeing police, fire, roads, sewer, water, everything that we cannot do for ourselves versus what we can do for ourselves. And a lot of the social programs, I feel like that's something that each and every one of us can go out and do. I can go out and do that right now. And so I just struggle with the city being the one that funded that. I have no issue at all with the program.
Do we have any other questions or comments from city council?
I guess, again, I know it's a different budget, but I guess I look at it as, you know, we voted and budgeted and approved the PIO, the, the information officer, that this is an extension of it, kind of a, a short-term fix on that. So I feel we've heard a lot from the constituents and from us that we haven't had a lot of communication. I think it's a good gap in the fill. I don't think it's a long-term solution, but I think we've all agreed, we really need to get a information officer, and I think this would, would help in the interim.
And this is something that our citizens voted on, is the lack of communication, right? So...
Correct. Correct. I think there, although it would be hard to quantify a return on investment for engagement, and if you, when I think about comp plans, paving plans, if we had more engagement, you know, some of those decisions are more informed, maybe. You know, we hear less, you know, questioning of, of what we're doing, if people know about it on the front end, or maybe it's something that we don't know about, I think we can make more informed decisions. I think that would be a great workshop for council as a citizen engagement, but I'm just the mayor for now.
Any other questions or discuss, discussion from council?
Seeing there is none, and as this is a resolution, I will call this for a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All of those opposed?
Aye.
Any abstentions?
Any abstentions? Resolution carries, 610. Moving on to reports from staff. Mr. Cameron?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate the discussion. You know, sometimes we sit through these meetings, and I go through, what was it, 11 or 12 ordinances and reports from staff, no change. And I think sometimes it gets, even myself, I'm like, man, something ought to change. You know, it's like, oh, there's a lot of things that are changing in those ordinances. And I would just, again, back to the discussion we just had, I mean, we've had workshops with council, asking the question, like I said, almost seven years I've been here, and the community engagement piece is a challenge. It's like, do people want to hear it? They want to talk about it? We have these agendas, these ordinances, and there's 11 or 12 things. I mean, we talked about, on the agenda tonight was recreational marijuana, very, you know, divided kind of divisive thing, but it did pass, and there's just not a lot of feedback. So when you hear nothing, you assume then no one's talking about it. So to have a situation or an opportunity for us to get out there where we can somehow bridge the divide and even have an avenue, so I agree with the discussion, but we ask in those workshops, what would be the best forum for us to communicate? And really, we're all scratching our heads a little bit. So I view this as an outside-the-box mechanism for us to look at something other than sitting there blaming the situation on lack of communication, because the citizens are right. I mean, even in my own, my own capacity, I think we need to hear more and know what's going on at state, county, and then ourselves, but yet I lead an administrative area that we're supposed to communicate. So thinking outside the box is what you ask us to do and to find a way, because it's not our background, it's not our MO, but something to asking someone to do it. So I appreciate, David, you stepping up. But again, I'll tell you this, even if you weren't doing that in that capacity, what you're doing in our community from the neighboring program is something that I think our country needs more of, where we're talking to our neighbors a little bit more. I'm probably more the one, it's like, if I go out and talk to somebody, they're going to want to sit there and ask me why we didn't pave that street, right? And so maybe I'm not as neighborly as I should be. But I think you, I appreciate the work that you do and all the staff. I think you all, these packets, I mean, you can't see it on TV or on YouTube, but that thing is this thick tonight. So Megan, Laura, everyone that puts this packet, the admin report, what goes into putting in 13 ordinances tonight, a bond measure where we're borrowing $10 million of taxpayer money, we're putting your mark money into place. So it's important that we find a way to tell people what we're doing. So I encourage you, the admin report, it's in front of you. We have beefed these up a lot. I've asked that we make sure we get these online or on our website, as what's going on in our community, because we're going to take a full frontal attack on how do we communicate, in a positive way, let me restate that, on how we communicate with our citizens and to get real feedback about what's the best way to grow this community moving forward, because we are moving forward. We don't want to lose our sense of, our sense of community. We want to do it the right way. But we only do that through feedback. We're up here guessing if we don't hear anything. And so, good dissent, good discussion is worth our time. Jared, Jennifer, to the, today, on the, not the ballot measure, I'm sorry, that was back in August, but even then, you did a great job. Martin, to the staff that all participated in the bond issue, how many people had their hand in it on some level? Would you just like to show, just Andrew, Chris? Jared and Jennifer, I think it was very well done, and I think that the feedback that we got from Martin and from the S and P was very favorable. I'll say this, I think, I don't, I'm not one of those that believes the bond market was just good to us today. I think the Lord was good to us today. I'm thankful for the work that you guys have done. Bob, welcome.
Thank you.
Bob Ford, grew up, I don't want to say grew up in Republic, but knows Republic well, lived outside of Republic on Highway 174 for some time, came back, he's got family in the area, so he's kind of boomeranging back to us. Well, actually, I guess it's been a couple of years. But we've been in a search for the finance director for quite some time. We've had some turnover in that position. But Bob is, we believe, is a stable force with the ability to forecast and help lead us and take us to another level. And so I just welcome you, look forward to seeing the work that you're going to do. We're going to give you some time to adjust. Larry Brown is not in the room tonight, but Larry has been a very stable force for us. Andrew and Jared, I just want to thank you for stepping into that capacity in October. I know neither one of you wanted to do that, but you've always been there to take care of it. Thank you for allowing us to be gone at the last council meeting, to the trip to Jefferson City, which has become a routine place for us. I want to thank Mayor Rusley, took, you know, he owns his own law firm, and so taking the time out of the day and not doing it at work, but he did a great job in the Capitol. Like I said, asking for 25 million more dollars, I wouldn't, I wouldn't have shit out on anybody, but he did a great job being there as part of our overall discussion. And I feel like that with senators in both houses, we've, and representative in both houses, we've had a lot of success and continue to look forward to seeing what we can do. We did officially receive the $5 million in Omnibus Bill for the water tower out at, out at Conway Hope. I will tell you this to the citizens, I know the mayor would probably kick me under the table if he was here tonight, but he's like, quit saying it. We are doing everything we can to minimize the impact. We, to the ratepayers, we're going to Jefferson City asking, we know that the growth and development, but also the past of not taking care of things on the sewer system has a financial impact, and we know that our residents are seeing it in their bills this week. And so it's not lost on us when we go to Jefferson City. We're not flippantly up there saying, well, maybe we'll make a good look of it, take a bunch of pictures and post it on social media and say, did our best. We're actively working on how to minimize those things. But in return, things do suffer, such as the communication side. So I'm glad to have partners that we're working with. Garrett Brickner, I think you're growing up right in front of my eyes, man. So thank you for the work that you're doing on your leadership to grow it and to do all the research. I mean, you said a lot tonight about how you researched it. I want to commend you that you went above and beyond to demonstrate to the auditors, to the people that bought that equipment, that you can stand by the product that you said, you know what, I've researched everything, I didn't cut no corners, I didn't make no special deals. I found the best deal for the citizens that will minimum, that will extend the life of our streets. And I just want to, I want to commend you as to the work that you're doing and seeing you do that and stand up here. Chris Taber, same to you. Watching you all grow is like a proud parent. You're like, this is awesome to watch this staff just flourish. What you're doing is unfounded, what was listed in the S and P, and if I'm going long, it's just because I'm proud tonight. I'm proud to be in Republic, I'm proud to lead this community, to lead this organization and be a part of it. We're doing unprecedented things, but it's going to take unprecedented leadership and community to continue that effort. And so I'm thankful for everyone that showed up. Sir, I'm not sure who you are, but I look forward to meeting you after the meeting. But that's all I have tonight, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cameron. Any reports from council?
I was just going to say, excited about the bond, and, you know, it's great to keep hearing about investors that want to do bonds or moving their businesses to Republic, that's exciting. And then I think a lot of us attended the workshop, but it was really neat to see all the, I think people forget all the behind-the-scenes stuff that goes into this presentation. The city has a lot of employees that do a lot of hard work, and just appreciate all the work they put in.
Thank you, Mr. Gerke.
Yeah, all I know, what Mr., similar last name, said, it's, that was, I mean, it's a great workshop, and it was really fun to be there, along with being informative and getting to be there with the whole city staff and everything. The other thing is tomorrow is International Women's Day. I don't know if you guys go big on that, but I feel like any opportunity we have to brag about how awesome a lot of the women in this room are and part of the city staff, that's pretty cool, especially Megan, who still, we've never had a conversation, and I love it. Like, I've talked to everyone individually outside of this chair, but not you. This is the only time we talk, and it's, don't say anything, because I want to continue what we have. I think it's beautiful. But, no, I mean, obviously, the women who work here, it's very evident, even to me, who's the newest member of this group, that, boy, you guys are pretty special, so I know we're lucky to have you.
That's awesome. I'll echo that. Karen, you're awesome. Every time you get up here and speak, I'm like, man, she knows her stuff, and you do it so confidently, and I'm always, I'm always very in awe. And Mr. Burton, I know Eric, Mr. Franklin, I understand your concerns, but it's knowing your record and your history with Republic, I trust you, and I'm so grateful that you're going to head this up. And I've said this before, but Republic is just a special city, and I think it's this unique partnership with the Chamber of Commerce. We've got our business side, we've got our government, and we've got the school system, and then our faith sector. There's just this beautiful cohesiveness, and then adding this element to it, I just think it's going to be really special. And I think going outside the box and doing this and keeping this community moving in that direction with that momentum, with a unified outlook from all the sectors is just really special. So thank you, and I'm excited to see where this goes.
Thank you, Jennifer. Ms. Poole?
I just want to ask him something. Before you left, you said we need to take the sale of that property that the city owns.
Yes, ma'am. So I'm going to add some color to what Councilwoman Poole is trying to suggest here, is that we, the city, own a parcel of land by accident per se, I guess you could say, was that there was a fire that took the place of it, so our property, our, whatever our municipal code requires us, if they do not pay us, that we can take for payment that land. We have no use necessarily for the land, and so, however, as our charter states, one individual, one councilperson cannot approach me and ask me to sell something on behalf of the city. It would take an action on behalf of this council if you would like to do that. That would require us to go, obviously, it would be an executive session issue, but should that be the desire of the council to proceed with potentially selling a parcel of land, it would require the consent of this council, of which we could bring up at a future meeting if that's the case. But I do, I don't believe that, I believe I just make that as an announcement for you tonight, that we would bring that for your consideration at a future meeting, is what she would like for us to do. And so it will, it will require your consent, but I told her she would have to make that announcement, so that's just clarifying, that's what she's doing. And we will provide you the, I do not know, do we, ballpark address?
325 Mill Street.
325 Mill Street. So the house was destroyed by, or it was debilitated by fire, it was not completely taken down, but by the time it was done, the property owner had not taken care of the cost, therefore conveyed to the city. We, the city, do not need to be property owners in a residential neighborhood unless there was some benefit, say, to a fire station, but I do not believe we've identified it as a benefit. Again, I'm getting outside my boundaries of the, of the agenda tonight, but that's what we will do, is bring back for further discussion and public notice at a later date. Thank you.